Welcome to our regular March Board meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Paulette O'Friess.
Here.
John Crean.
Here.
Scott Latham.
Here.
Brian Tobin.
Here.
In the event of an emergency, visitors are advised that they may exit this room from the one side door which leads directly to the parking lot. In the event of an emergency, everyone is asked to move away from the building and do not attempt to leave in your automobiles since this may cause traffic problems or block incoming emergency vehicles. Thank you. Going to do the Winter Sports Award first?
Yes.
We should nominate and do the Vice President first. I mean if something happens to me in the next 30 seconds.
Okay.
Sorry, it could happen. We're going to skip to number seven. We need a nomination for Vice President of the Board of Education.
Nominate John Crean.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, John. I feel so much better now. Now he has to get sworn in.
Hi, John Crean.
Hi, John Crean.
I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of Vice President.
The duties of Vice President.
Of the Board of Education. Of the Southhold Union Free School District.
The Southhold Union Free School District.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
You get a raise now, John. Okay, thank you. Now I'll turn this over to you.
Yep. So at this time, we're going to honor some of our winter sports, our winter athletes, student athletes. You know, I've had the pleasure over the last couple of years of getting to see all of our winter teams play in multiple different areas, and many of them more than once. And it's always great to see kids out there doing something extra. You know, not only are they wonderful in school, exhibit wonderful sportsmanship, but also compete at a high level. And it's really great to see people putting in that additional work and that extra work outside of what's required to really progress and become something more. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Flanagan now, our Athletic Director, and he's going to be calling a bunch of our kids up. At the very end, we're going to take one picture with all the students up here, if you could. Oh, yeah, okay. We're going to do the cheer team first and let them go because they have practice.
They're going to take their picture first.
Yeah, and we'll take a picture and then we'll go with everybody else.
Good evening. I would like to thank Dr. Moore and the Board of Education for inviting our winter athletes' teams to be recognized tonight. Athletes, when you are called, please come up, receive your certificate, and then the cheer team will come up on the stage, will take your picture with the Board of Education, and then we'll have a seat after that. Okay? At the conclusion of the ceremony, all other teams will take the pictures with the Board of Education. Thank you.
So I lied. We'll take two pictures. One.
Yes, I'm sorry, yes.
One for cheer so they can then go to practice and then one for everybody else.
All right. So this year, the cheer team had a lot of success, similar to last year. They finished third in the Division Championships, in the County Championships, sorry. They have two all-county cheer people and an all-division and an all-county, all-academic all-county, which is really a great accomplishment. Something I do want to mention about the team, this is the second year that they've been at a high level, in the top three of the county, and I think that they could probably have two teams that are in the division that are, they're just very, very good. They're nationally ranked, they put in a good effort every year. But the one thing I want to point out about this team is they could probably just float with the routine that they have, and they could probably get that third place still. But Coach and the team, they don't go for third place, they go for the win. And I know every year at the end of the season, Coach makes some tweaks to the program, and they did it this year, and they killed it at the championships. They didn't come through, you know, break it over that third spot. I just want to give girls and Coach all the credit in the world for really going for it and not just being satisfied with that third place. So kudos to you all. Without further ado, Chloe Mannwaring, all-county cheer, come on up. Lauren Mullen, all-county cheer, come on up. Both sophomores and all-county. All-division cheerleader, senior Maya Riley. All-county academic, Carly works hard in the classroom and hard on the mat, Carly Walinski. And this next award goes to our senior who spent years of dedication for the Southhold School District and the cheer team. We give her the Southhold Leadership Award, Sarah Sorano. And the next athletes I'm going to call, these are all teammates of the third-place finishing team. Ashley Bifoko. Julia Cardi. Nicole Corzini. Ashley Doring. Jordan Colen. Chloe, I'm going to hold yours for now, I have yours here, all right? Lauren, I have yours here. Trista Panetta. Dylan Riley. Maya Riley. Sarah Sorano, I'm going to hold yours. Lindsay Taggart. Carly, I have yours here. Carly Walinski. And that concludes. And that concludes our varsity cheer team. Great job, girls. Clap it up for our varsity cheer. Board, please stand, we'll take a photo.
The short one's standing in the front.
You go in the middle.
I'm standing next to Scott. How about their coach?
Where's the coach?
Coach.
Come on, Coach, get down here. Yeah.
Last year, you were in a wheelchair, so.
Yeah. It's progress.
Dangerous sport.
Thank you.
Congratulations, ladies.
And I should have mentioned in a second ago, the family cooperation with the cheer team is really great, there's a lot of support there, so we thank our families as always also. Okay, moving along to girls' basketball. Our girls' basketball this year had a fine year. They finished runner-up to Setonmouth Riches for the County Championship. I always give credit to our shared athletes because they have to put in an extra effort of commitment making that trip to Greenport, to Matituck, to kind of stay part of that culture and that sport. And it's not as easy as it thinks, to get on that bus and do that commute there and coming back. Especially for a young athlete, it's a very difficult commitment, but we're really proud of the ones who do, and they've been really stepping up for us. So without further ado, moving along to our girls' basketball team, all-league player, Lily Corwin. Ella Lors had quite the year this year. She is the League Five All-Academic Girls' Basketball Player and also from the county, this is not from the Southhold, this is from the county, she's the unsung hero for Section 11, so great job, Ella Lors, come on up. This next athlete has been a four-year starter for us. She has really put in a lot of work, a lot of dedication and commitment, as well as her family. We appreciate all of her work through the years, and it's going to take me a second to get through all of this. So Brianna McFarland finished this year all-league for girls' basketball. She got co-MVP of the entire League Eight, I believe. Well, she definitely got all-co-MVP, I believe it's League Eight. She's all-conference and all-county. So Brianna McFarland had quite the year this year. Brianna, come on up if you're here, please. Clap it up for Brianna. And moving along to our Southhold Leadership Awards, a lot of these athletes, again, are seniors, but they've also put in a lot of dedication to our athletic program, and I'm going to pay homage to them today. May Riley, come on up, the Southhold Leadership Award. Francesca Santa Croce was Rookie of the Year this year for Suffolk County. Ninth grader playing on varsity, good things look to come. Also, Southhold Leadership Award goes to Megan Tobin. Megan Tobin here tonight? And that rounds out our girls' basketball team. Please give a warm round of applause for girls' basketball. Moving along to boys' basketball. Boys' basketball had a decent year this year, they're still building from where they have to, you know, to where they want to be as far as a championship team. We had some really good leadership this year from our seniors, and we are looking forward to their future. We know that they're going on to college, moving on to big things. And the basketball team, I think, basically took the step of like, the season starts tomorrow, was the last day of the season, so they've been in the gym, I think, two days a week, getting ready for next year, which is exciting. So to honor our seniors, come on up Quincy Brigham. Jaden Olson has been a mainstay of the program for years now, I think he was a three-year varsity starter for us. This year, he took away all-league honors from Section 11. Jaden Olson, come on up. And finally, we have, sorry, nope, there's two more. Jack Sepanowski was an all-league basketball player for this year. Jack, are you here? And last but not least, Jay Char Montana. Jay Char Montana is a four-year player for us as well. He also is receiving the Southhold Leadership Award for all of his efforts. Jay, are you here? Clap it up for Jay. All-county academic, this will be our second all-county academic award, this year goes to Skylar Valdarama. Skylar, are you here? All right, moving along to girls' track. Girls' track is interesting, we have a really dedicated group of girls this year, a few of them are seniors, which we'll recognize tonight. Again, the track team is a difficult program to go through, they are practicing throughout the week, and then on Saturdays and Sundays, they're going to Suffolk Community College to perform and compete. So again, it's a little bit extra added dedication there. So our Southhold Leadership's Award go to Gabriella Bifoko. Ava Coachero. We have two all-county athletes in Olivia Mishkowitsky, Olivia, you here? And Cameron Stanton, both all-county track athletes. Thank you very much. While we don't have like all-league or all-county awards for our boys' track team, it's a heavy senior-studded team this year, and all of these boys for the boys' track team really are leaders in themselves. The way that they, I see them every day in practice, they're showing up on time, the dedication to the coach and the team, they're going from winter tracks straight to spring tracks, so all the dedication for the last four years, we do really appreciate for all these following athletes. The Southhold Leadership Awards go to Wyatt Carter. Robert Doring. Luke Gibbs. Jack Kozinski. Ben Jornick. Brendan Kilcommons. Matthew Molnar. And Fernando Rodriguez. Thank you, Robert and Doring, for being here tonight, we really appreciate it. And last but not least, our varsity bowling team. Varsity bowling team's been a fun team to watch grow over these last seven years. When I first got here, I don't think they have had a win really in literally years. And then we had a coach take over and they got one, and then they kind of got two, and then now they're actually becoming fairly competitive to where people are recognizing them when they come into the lanes. And we actually had one of our players this year, Noah Benson, he, I think, you know, he definitely bowled a 300 at practice this year, and the alley gave him like a big kind of pin and award, there's a whole, there's a special thing for Noah. So Noah will get our Southhold Leadership Award this year, but also bowling that 300 there was a very, quite an accomplishment he'll always remember, so. Noah Benson. Southhold Leadership Award, Liam Magath. Southhold Leadership Award, Daniel Palacios. And here I'm really excited about, I do believe this is our first all-county bowler, in Brian Schill. Congratulations, Brian, Coach Sinclair, and the entire bowling team. Thank you all for being here tonight, thank you to the board and Dr. Moore for hearing me out. Thank you, everybody. Everybody come on up for a picture, please. Don't be shy.
Thank you, Mr. Flanagan and student athletes. Now we can go to regular meeting, right? Okay, that brings us to our first hearing of visitors. At this time, we ask that requests and questions and comments be kept to agenda items only. Does anybody care to address the board at this time? Okay. Consent agenda. Okay, this consists of our approval of our minutes. I'm sorry. Thought I had mine with my notes on it, but now I can't. I do, sorry. I have to go to mine because I have notes on mine. Our consent agenda consists of approval of our minutes from our regular meeting of February 15th, our budget meetings of March 1st and March 8th, also includes our financial matters, which are our schedule of bills, our Treasurers' Report from January and February, our monthly budget status report of February, transfers, extra classroom activity fund for February. Also included in this is surplusing, we're surplusing 227 outdated library books, we have contracted services with the Billings Incorporated, and CSE recommendations. Are there any questions or comments on the consent agenda? I have one, and I don't know if now's the time to ask it, but I'm going to ask it anyway. It has to do with the stuff that's going on in the banking world, and I'm just wondering how the monies that the Southhold School District has in banks is not protected. Is that, well, is that a bad question to ask? Is this the time to ask it? I figured financial matters might be the time to ask.
Right, and we do, our accounts are subject to the FDIC, which is a 50,000, but we have collateral agreements where those banks are required to have sufficient funds set aside also in case that bank, our bank that we deal with, if anything happens to them. So basically, we are covered.
For millions of dollars.
5% of every dollar is in the bank.
Through what mechanism?
I'm sorry?
Through what mechanism?
The FDIC and the banks.
Well, the FDIC is 250.
Have individual collateral setups. I mean, it's through collateral, I don't know if it's required, but we're required, we have an agreement with each bank that we deal with, and the collateral could be 100, it's 105%, 3% of every dollar is in the bank.
Okay.
If anything happens to that one bank.
Okay, thank you. I thought it was kind of a timely question. I've been thinking about it for the last couple of days, how municipalities and school districts are protected.
It's collateral insurance or it's a contractual agreement?
That's what I thought, okay.
Okay, that's what I thought.
But it's outside, it's outside of FDIC.
It's outside of FDIC. Because that's government, that's federal government.
Which is the first 250.
I think, I'd say 250,000 or even 500,000, everything above that is that government, it's through this collateral agreement. So each bank we deal with, we have a signed agreement with that bank, that they have another bank covering every 100,000 dollar.
And we also have multiple accounts, correct?
Right.
Well, that's right, we deal with per bank, so we have to deal with two main banks, and they each one have a separate collateral.
We're all commercial banks, I think the ones that were failing were all merchant banks, so they were exposed a little.
Thank you for taking the time to answer that question, sorry. It just was in my head. Okay, is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That brings us to the Bozey's Joint Cooperative Bidding Program for the 2023-2024 school year. I'm not going to bore everybody by reading this, I just need a motion to adopt the resolution which allows us to competitively bid off of the Bozey's contract.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All business, field lighting. Dr. Moore.
So we had questions about field lighting because during the fall season, we had multiple occasions where our games ran into the dark. It turned out that, you know, I don't know if it was a Section 11 plan, but our spring season started the day after daylight savings, so, you know, in working with the other schools that we join with for sports, we didn't, we don't need lights to run our practices now. We did talk about the possibility of trying to get lights to practice under for a couple nights because there are some schools that have games under lights, and it's a good opportunity for our students to practice the way they're going to play. And then also, you know, we would get the opportunity to see how that works around here, to see if we ever want to have a game under portable lights. We looked into a couple of different companies, and right now, with the fuel and everything else, portable lights are extremely expensive, about $3,000 a week to rent. So we're going to continue to look at some of our municipalities and see if they have the ability to loan us lights for a period of time. You know, the Matituck administration has said that, you know, they'd be open to working with their coach to try to have a couple of practices under lights and see how well it works. You know, we don't really know how well lacrosse will go under portable lights, so we would have to practice under them and see if it's safe to maybe have games.
We did rent lights once outside, it wasn't the school's responsibility, I believe it was the Athletic Association, I know it was the Athletic Association. And we did rent lights and had homecoming outside for one game. As a matter of fact, we had to rent them longer because we had a terrible storm the night it was supposed to occur, and I think it got put off until the following week, if I recall correctly. But they were portable lights, and it was a local gentleman from Matituck that owned the business that you, somebody could maybe reach out to, that gave us.
Yeah.
A pretty good deal at the time. It wasn't three, I know it wasn't $3,000.
Yeah.
I think it might have been like 500 or, but times they are changing too, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can get that information to you, I remember the name, absolutely.
Great. You want me to go right into super?
Absolutely.
Okay. So spring sports have begun, although it doesn't feel like spring. I've been out and I've seen the teams out there and in our gym. It's really nice to see all the kids running around afterwards, I'm sure it affected, you know, who was able to be here tonight, because some of them are just getting home from practices an hour ago and with homework and dinner and everything else. But it's really nice to see them out there, it's only a short period of time before everything turns green and they'll be playing games. We had our high school play, it was wonderful. If anybody had an opportunity to see it, it was absolutely hysterical, the kids did a fantastic job. And not only did they put on a wonderful production, they just really enjoy the days of rehearsing and being here with each other, and they're really wonderful together, I get a chance to come in sometimes and sit in the back during rehearsals. And, you know, it really is a great atmosphere, and when they do their actual shows, you can tell that they're really enjoying it because they do an absolutely fantastic job. Right now, our elementary school is doing their rehearsals for Annie, they're in here in the afternoons. I've only been able to sneak in once, they immediately stop and look at you when you come in, with high school kids not as much, so I have to try to figure out how to get in quieter, otherwise I don't really get to watch much. But, you know, if you have an opportunity to see that one, if you got a chance to see the high school play, good for you, if not, try to get to one of the future ones because they're fantastic. If you get a chance to see Annie, it's coming up soon, you know, I encourage you to. But it's really nice to see all the activity and almost a sense of normalcy compared to the last couple of years, watching kids walk around and the pizza they had, that the Athletic Association has for them on Wednesdays and practices and, you know, just the normal, I forgot my cleats today, and things that were not normal for, you know, really a couple of years, it's nice to see, and it's nice to see kids engaging in those things.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That brings us to some personnel things here. This shouldn't say entering, now to our point one, it should say leaving, shouldn't it, Patty? The medical leave one?
Yes, it's not just leaving.
That should say full-time permanent, leaving district, not.
The title says entering.
Chris Campos is taking a medical leave of absence effective March 13th, 2023, for four weeks utilizing sick days. An entering district full-time permanent, I'm going to kill these names. Jenny.
Zilla.
Zilla, who will be our district treasurer, appointment effective April 10th, 2023. And Nicole Tahada, I didn't kill that one, did I, Nicole? Welcome. Who will be our new family and consumer science teacher effective April 24th, 2023. But I understand you're going to be here maybe a little bit before that, helping us out. Welcome. And then we've got some translation, then we've got some substitute teachers. Megan Denim, Sarah Peffing, Matthew, I can't do these names. Patty, could you put like little symbols and how to pronounce?
Spelling phonetic.
And Nicole Tahada. And we also have a termination, be it resolved that the certified employee identified in a February 9th, 2023 letter, sent pursuant to New York State Education Law, Section 3031, is hereby terminated in accordance with that letter effective April 21st, 2023. Any comments? What questions about the personnel, recommendations? Is there a motion to accept?
No move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nicole, welcome. We're happy to have you aboard. We happen to think you're coming to a really great district, we hope you think the same thing. Thank you for being here tonight, that was really nice of you. Patty, you want to do this again, huh?
Yes, I think there's a big pay raise in it for me this year.
Okay, you and me both. I need a motion to nominate Patricia De Gregorio as a civil service member trustee on the East End Health Plan Board for a three-year term from July 1st, 2023 to June 30th, 2026. That's a long darn time, Patty, are you sure?
Yeah.
Okay.
No move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion. What is this, what is this audit? Didn't we do one this last month?
This is a single audit.
This is the one that we have to do because our grants went up.
Oh, okay. All right, I need a motion, I guess I should say a motion to accept the federal single audit report of the financial records for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022, as prepared by Colin Janaski LLP and approved to send the corrective action plan. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody have any new business? I had a banking question, but I asked it under financials. Finance Committee report.
Nothing.
Building Committee report.
Nothing to report.
Policy Committee report.
Nothing at this time.
All of those committee reports. That brings us to our second hearing of visitors, if anybody cares to, they can ask questions or make comments to the board of any school matters in general. Does anybody care to address the board now? You just have to come up to the microphone and state your name. Please. Please.
Hi, everybody. I'm Marta Thomas, which I, and I know I've spoken with you before, but I just kind of officially wrote everything down. So I would just have it in one place. Okay. I'm Marta Thomas. I graduated from Southold High School in 1998. I attended school here from kindergarten through my senior year. The year that I graduated, in my class, there were zero Latino children in, at all in my class. Every person spoke English as their first language. And it has now been 25 years since I graduated. And Southold School shows the numbers of Hispanic speakers are at 32% in our school. And those numbers are expected to grow. I would like a second language to be added to the elementary school at Southold for two reasons. The first reason is for the cognitive benefits. It's easy and natural for kids to learn a language. Before puberty, the brain's synapses are mostly for language systems. This means our children are better equipped to learn a language at a younger age. It increases their brain development. It improves their social skills and they perform better in school. Children who are learning a second language actually perform better on tests and start reading earlier than kids who speak only one language. Southold begins the second language courses right now at age 12, which is seventh grade. And that, of course, is after everything I've just said of what.
We have an enrichment program prior to that in elementary school, after school, I believe. You're talking about within the school day? So I just think you need to make note of that though.
Okay, not now. And I, I think you may have mentioned it the first time.
We have, it's running right now.
It's running right now for grades three through six, after school in the elementary school.
That's, that finished, that was, that was, I think, for six weeks and it's over.
Okay, well, it was running this spring like it used to.
Okay. Okay, so secondly, I believe we should add Spanish as the second language. I believe the kids who learn Spanish will have a huge advantage. It is one of the world's most widely spoken languages and is one of the UN's six official languages. The more fluent and ready that I feel our kids are when they leave the school, the further they can go with their career opportunities. And they will be on high demand from international companies. But in elementary school, with 32% Latino population, our kids have classmates that they cannot communicate with. This is a huge problem. We expect these kids to learn English and they are. But we can't, but why can't their school and their classmates show an initiative to understand them? And then I'm going to kind of read you my thoughts. I have some questions which you don't have to answer. I just want to kind of put them out there. Okay, we just heard a story of a parent entering the school to pick up their child. In all of the elementary school, there is one that I believe that I've been able to find out. There's one, let me repeat that, one Spanish-speaking person who is a teacher that speaks it conversationally. And I'm saying, let's think about that. 32% in the Latino population in our school and we have one person who can talk to the students and the parents. Spanish was just offered in an after-school program for third to sixth grade, as you mentioned, for six week, six weeks. And my question is, why wasn't it offered for the younger children to take? Why aren't we hiring only teachers who are dual-language speakers? Why aren't we only hiring them so that one day we can have an immersive program at our school? Why aren't we showing the Latino parents that we care and we want everyone to speak dual languages? Why aren't we following through with other community, following, following through like other community schools, in fact, all of the North Fork and offering Spanish? Why aren't we requiring Southold staff to learn Spanish so they can communicate? Why aren't we paying for that? Southold is not a poor school and has no, and has money in reserves. Why aren't we adding a Spanish teacher? Because this is as very important to me and to our group, why aren't we raising the taxes with a new hire and letting our community make the decision on the program? Why aren't the parents being surveyed by the school on what they think is important? Our enrollment may be dropping, but that does not mean that we should be dropping important programs. Maybe we should look at other subjects that are being taught or where we can clean up spending as a language is added. Why have grants not been looked into by the elementary school staff to fund an additional teacher? As you can see, I have many questions. A lot of these have not been answered in a relaxed, non-videod session. Tomorrow, we are having a meeting with Dr. Moore and Ellen in the school, just kind of us. I thought it would be better for some parents who maybe don't want to come here. We could just kind of have a talk with them. And I'm hoping a lot of these answers to these questions would be answered at that time.
Can I ask, have you asked them to anybody? Because we've communicated many times. And it's the first I'm hearing just about all of them.
Some of them, I believe that I have. And even here, I'm just kind of going up on this. I, I think that we have.
Maybe you could tonight send those to Dr. Moore and Mrs. O'Neil so that they can be ready to answer those questions tomorrow.
Yeah, I will.
Or at least answer what they can, since you're meeting with them.
I mean, I guess my other question would be.
Certainly, we're not in a position to answer them tonight. So tomorrow, in that conversation, I think it would be a great time.
I would. And I guess that my other question would be, have you guys thought of these? Have you, like, nobody is really, it's been a difficult situation figuring out exactly how the whole process of wanting to add something goes. I kind of feel like we were told we need to speak to Ellen and then we were told we need to speak to Dr. Moore and then we were told we have to come in front of the board. And I kind of feel like it isn't a straight shot as far as you go to this person and you'll get an answer and then this. It's just sort of like, I feel that we need one group that supports us and they're going to maybe get the other two groups to help. But I don't, I don't feel that we've come out and very openly been said, okay, you're going to do this and you're going to do this and this is what you're going to find out. And that, like, no, like, you don't all have to even really respond to us. So it's a little difficult, I feel.
Yeah, but tomorrow, are you asked to meet so that you can ask all your questions?
Yeah, I guess I feel like, how come, like, is that really the only way to do it? How, like, why weren't, why isn't anything asked to begin with? And I understand that you guys aren't, and I understand you don't want to share everything because you don't want, you know, things are in writing and it may or may not happen.
I guess maybe, maybe there was some confusion because when someone reached out to me at the very beginning, they said, how do we, you know, how do we make our feelings felt about next year's budget and adding things? And my response was, we have an open session for the community to come to a board meeting. You know, if I knew, I guess, more about it, maybe I would have said, you know, maybe you'd want to set up a meeting with me. Like, tomorrow's the first meeting that you've asked for with me.
Yeah, and that I set up because I was like, okay, maybe we just need to talk to you, to you, you and Ellen and you could talk to us, like, just as people, like, this is what we want and what do you guys think?
Marta, I had suggested that two months ago to you.
Well, I did meet with Ellen.
We as a board take.
I did meet.
We just act on recommendations from the administration. We don't, people have come for years. I mean, there's people that want to, certain sports teams. And Mr. Flannick could tell you, sometimes it takes years to, to vet it out and see if it's going to work in different subjects. So it, it doesn't happen through us. We act on things at the board.
Well, I feel that if I have the boards, everyone on the board, forget it, forget about Ellen, you're, that you guys would then be helping. Because then I've come to these meetings and then Dr. Moore is saying, well, we really should have Ellen in it.
We don't build the budget. The administration builds the budget and we accept their budget recommendations. If you asked each of us, I think we could all tell you things that personally we may like to put in the school. That's not how a board of education operates. That's why in the beginning, we suggested you meet with Dr. Moore and Mrs. O'Neil because they're the administrators. Like Mr. Rush in this building, if he wants to add something, if he wants to add an elective, we don't add the electives. He does his research. It takes time, how many kids are interested in all of those things.
Do you always vote for the programs?
No, we don't vote for the electives. We don't vote for the course of study in this district. We accept the recommendations of our administrative team and either approve or don't approve their budget before it goes out to the taxpayers for a vote. We don't do a.
We don't have our fingers in the day-to-day operation.
Right. We don't micromanage the school.
So are you saying that then the answer to, or my question of, as far as getting these things answered and then having them approved or not, comes down to Dr. Moore and Ellen or just Dr. Moore or just Ellen?
I think it's the administrative team. Our administrative team, our administrators and our business official.
I, I feel that we come to these meetings and we speak and then it's a little strange if Ellen would be for or against or have anything to answer, she's not required to be here.
But that's why we suggested you meet with.
And we, and we did. And the thing that she told us was, you need to go to the board event and talk to Dr. Moore.
Well, she also, because I've been on some of the communications with all of us, she's also been very clear that she believes that it would be a wonderful program in the elementary school, as have I. You know, it's not as easy, and I know Mr. Crane spoke a little more in-depth about this. You know, when you add, you also have to delete or you have to move or you have to shift or, you know, it's not, there's not an endless supply of time or finances. You know, so even like, you asked about, you know, why not survey the community? How do you ask them if they, like, if you say, hey, who wants foreign language? The answer's going to be yes from everybody until you say, but then you're going to lose this or this or this or this.
Yeah, so whatever.
Yeah, so it's a very hard, like, I don't know how I would even survey, you know. It's like the old question, if I gave you $10 million, would you take it? Everybody, you know, everybody says yes until they find out that that comes with, but you can only live half of your life after that. You know, like, there's different factors.
Yeah, and I understand that. I, I guess I feel like it was not hard for, we submitted our own survey to the parents that we could get a hold of. We have 90, which we'll go over with you tomorrow, and their responses. And we had 95 people answer, which I thought was pretty good. It isn't everyone. And we probably did not have a lot of the Latino parents answering. I think we had maybe two.
So hopefully tomorrow, I can answer as many of your questions as possible.
I just, I guess, wish that it had, is a little bit, Ellen is not here to answer and her answer was, come, go to the board meetings.
Yeah.
But it wouldn't be her place to answer at a board meeting either. That's not how that happens. But what I would suggest going forward, and I know it doesn't answer your question and I know you want this done immediately. But in years past, the state required shared decision-making teams in the elementary and the high school. And we had shared decision-making teams, which consisted of students, teachers, administrators and community members. They weren't necessarily parents, they were community members. And shared decision-making teams would meet at our board meetings. They would work with the administration. And I'll give you an example of what came to us as a board was closing the campus at lunch for the ninth graders. And they researched it literally for three, three or four years. They did a ton of research. They wanted to know what the administrators thought, what the teachers thought, what the community thought. And they did due diligence. And the members changed, obviously, in a three-year period on the shared decision. The board does not sit on that team. Then they made recommendations with the support of the administration. They said, here's what we think we would like our district to do. So the board supported the recommendation because it went through those steps. Maybe, to make a long story short, maybe we should go back to shared decision-making committees next year. I don't know what Mr. Rush thinks about it. I don't know what you think about it.
Was that for everything?
Maybe as an administrative team, you can talk about that in your next meeting. I thought it was a great, effective way to communicate.
Yeah, they're not germane, typically shared decision-making teams are not germane to a topic. They're germane to all topics.
Exactly.
But it gives you the opportunity. Like, I do it with my student advisory council. I get to get students third through 12th grade. I get to get their input about different things that we're doing in school. Every other month, I meet with them.
Are all decision-making groups, is it always going to be three plus a year for an answer?
No, it depends on the, on the subject, Marta. When you were in high school here, I think there were shared decision-making teams. They may have changed over the years. It was actually a requirement, you've been in education a long time, and from the state to have these. Not necessarily for I-wants, just for things, conversations, how to make changes from groups of stakeholders within the district. Not everybody always gets what they want, of course. But some things, I can't even remember, that one I knew took a long time. Some could take 20 minutes, I imagine, you know, like, what color do you want to paint the line? You know, those things. But if you, if there had been those committees in place, perhaps, when you came initially, maybe we would have said, go back to Mrs. O'Neil and this might be a subject for she and the shared decision-making committee. That's all I'm saying. It doesn't answer you now. I'm just thinking of a go-forward proactive thing.
We can talk more about timelines tomorrow, you know. I'm happy to try to answer any of those questions.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I feel also, just as most of us are new, new parents, with young parents, maybe it would have been nice if somebody had said, okay, we'll meet with you. Like, everything I feel like is coming from us. I don't feel that we're getting, like, okay, if somebody had said, come to the school, let's talk to you. like, okay, if somebody had said, come to the school, let's talk to you, like, a lot of it, that was our idea, if we didn't come up with that and say, let's meet, what would've happened? The answer would've been, we'll tell you after the budget, when we know what the language experience is, we're gonna let you know. Well, what if, once, by the time we find out what the language experience is gonna be, it's not how we want it to be, like, well, then we're, now we're talking about the year after next, like, this just goes on and on, and I think our view is that this is really important, and what, maybe, why, maybe, why isn't it as important to you? Like, I just don't know what else to do to get an answer as to why we're the last school that's...
I don't know if it's accurate to say, why isn't it really important to you, like, I don't judge the importance that you have for something, I wouldn't, I'd prefer you not judge the importance I have for it.
Okay, I'm only, um...
You know, I think that categorizing it that way, there are, everything here is important to me, that's my job, you know, listening to parents is my job, and that's a two-way street. A couple of months ago, when we communicated, you know, I ended emails and communications with you, and spoke with you after board meetings, let me know if I can help with anything.
I guess my, my, my non-understanding was how much is, I feel like, kind of in the end, Ellen being the principal of our school.
Ellen's a resource to us making decisions in our district, as are oral employees, as are our kids, as are our family members, as are our board members.
Do you make decisions where you could then say to our principal, this is what we're gonna do, and you have...
Ultimately, I make recommendations to the board, and the board votes on them.
Okay.
You know...
So she doesn't have to be in support or not in support?
If you want it to work, yeah, the principal would really kinda have to be in support, you know?
Yeah, of course.
You know, are there things that, you know, like, we have differing opinions on in life, all of us, yeah, you can just ask my wife, and she'll be happy to tell you that that's the way the world works, you know, she wins, always at home, here, sometimes I win, sometimes not, but, you know, we all try to get on the same page.
I guess I'm just feeling like, now that the, it will be voted on, on April 4th, that now the budget is going through, and we didn't see anything come up on the line that there was gonna be an additional teacher added, which is maybe how we thought it would go.
Yeah.
I just feel like time is ticking away.
So there, there won't be an additional teacher added, and I know we spoke about that, Dr. Crane was very, you know, clear about the fact that, you know, as we shrink, we're really not in position to add additional teachers. Could there additionally be a teacher down the road? You know, we can talk more about the timelines of how things like that happen in a school, you know, a school...
I guess I feel like if we're not going to add a teacher, that unless the only teacher that speaks Spanish is gonna be asked to do something, which maybe that's your plan...
I don't know if there's other options than that, but we can talk about them tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay? I mean, I can certainly, you know, we can, like, I can give you a lot of possibilities, you know, as we go through our process of budget, you know, being passed, schedules being done, all sorts of things like that, then we'll have better opportunities.
And we would love that, but I believe that, I think, in our, um, talk about that, I think in one of the emails that came from Ellen was basically, there's not, not gonna be much to tell you until the budget gets voted on, it was sort of like, you have to wait, so, if that really happens tomorrow, that would be great.
I think tomorrow, when you're meeting with Ellen and Dr. Morrow, maybe you can ask them some of those specific questions that just can't be answered tonight without Mrs. O'Neil being here.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if she was gonna be here or not.
No, I didn't, I didn't know, you know, I, I thought we were meeting tomorrow to talk about all this, so I don't really have much prepared either.
Not every parent could make it tomorrow, so some are here, so I was like, let's...
Okay, and again, you guys are welcome to come anytime you want, and I'm happy to share with you, you know, we can, like I said, after every meeting, you know, if you wanna talk about things, just let me know. You may not love everything I say, but I'm happy to share with you whatever information I have, or, or things that we've found out, or, you know, possibilities going forward, or what things may look like, as long as there's a clear understanding that until we have a budget and a schedule, none of that is set in concrete, you know, it can't, it can't be, I remember, I think you emailed me back, you know, if we're not adding positions, why after the budget? Well, you know, what happens is, once your budget passes, or if a budget were to fail, then all non-essential things are looked at, and many of them are cut, you know, additions probably would go first, you know, then things that have stayed in place would come after that, you know, now, we've never been in that position, gosh, five decades, maybe?
When I was here, two out of my four years, we were on a budget.
Yeah, so we have an, you know, we have a very, very, when she says here, she means as a student, not as a board member.
I've been a board member that long.
So, we have an incredibly supportive community, so I don't expect that, but I have learned in the 30-something years that I've done this, that I don't promise things that I can't come through on, you know, so, I'll be happy to speak with everybody tomorrow, I'll be happy to try to answer any questions, ones I can't answer, I'll tell you that. Um, you know, like we talked about by email, you know, you guys asked for a meeting so that you can ask questions and share information, I'd love to see the survey that you sent out, and how it, you know, explains the totality of what that means to everybody, so that we can look at, you know, the, you know, the responses, and the meaningfulness of all of those responses, and, and, you know, how they relate to making decisions. Um, I'm happy, like I said, to do all that stuff, and I think 3:30 tomorrow, we're over at the elementary.
Yes, I look forward to it.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Please, please email them before so that they have a chance to look at the questions, I think it'd just be beneficial, right?
We did that, I mean...
Oh, that list of questions that you asked tonight?
Uh, sorry, my question's not here, we're not, but we did, I did kinda give a general...
Oh, okay, okay.
She gave an overview of what we're gonna talk about, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, and I'm not, you know, I don't mind, um, so if I don't have an answer for something, I'll be happy to try to get it for you. Um, I can't promise I'll have an answer for everything that you may ask, you know.
Thank you, Marta. Someone else? Just say, state your name at the microphone, please.
My name is Alyssa Pryor. Um, I won't be there tomorrow, so I just wanted to say a couple of things, 'cause I was with Marta on the initial meeting. Um, when we went to that meeting, we were told to come here, that was the only direction we had, so we didn't know anything further, we just knew we had to come here, so, in a way, I guess it's our fault for not asking here...
We can take some of the blame.
Right, so that is why we started showing up, 'cause that's where we were told to come, but our initial thought was to go to the principal. The other thing, I was writing these down as she was speaking, um, she had said, the day we met with her, that something would needed to be taken away. I definitely didn't want something taken away, and I said that right away, and she was like, no, I'm not saying that that's definitely going to happen, but that's a possibility. And I was like, well, I would love to talk about a way that that wouldn't happen, so that was the way I felt when we initially spoke about it. And then I think, by coming here, I thought we would talk about it more, and then it just didn't happen, so that was a big concern of mine, I really didn't want something taken away, because in my mind, I was thinking, well, then everybody's gonna hate us, so I did not want that. Um, and the other thing was, when we met with the principal, she did say it was a timing-of-the-day issue, um, but it has always been said, it wasn't, well, not always, a couple of times it was mentioned, it wasn't a finance issue, that it was a timing of the day, and then that's where it came in, that something would needed to be cut, and I don't know, I just find that so upsetting, we don't wanna take something away from the kids, I think, before we send out a survey, I would wanna know what we're taking away, before it went out there.
That's a very hard, because I bet you if you ask all 300 and some odd people over there, you're gonna get 300 different answers on what should be taken away.
For sure.
Or what they're comfortable taking away, or, you know, and the fact is, like, not speaking from a financial standpoint, adding a period into the day that you do something, you're going to miss a period of something you do now, because we don't have free periods in our elementary day, we don't have study hall, like, we've added a lot of classes, electives for our middle schools and our early high school kids in the last couple of years, but they had study halls, so it took the place of a period where they were in a room doing homework, you know, um, we don't have that set up in our elementary school.
Right.
But again, we can talk more about that.
Well, I won't be there.
I apologize that you're not gonna be there.
I have my kids.
But again, if you wanna talk, just reach out.
Yeah, so I did send you an email, and it's my fault, I didn't follow up, but I did send you an email, and I looked tonight, and it was the right email address about grant information, I had sent you some information, it was on February 16th, if you wanna look at it, um, and then it's my fault, I did not follow up, and we missed the deadline for it, but that was one of the things that I was looking at, I had reached out to a lot of people, and everybody was super responsive, but, um, then it's, it's my fault, I dropped the ball.
Can you just, February?
February 16th, and my name is Alyssa Pryor, but...
Yep, I got that, I'll, I'll look for it. I apologize if I didn't get back to you.
It's not your fault, I should've resented when I didn't hear back.
It is, if I didn't get back to you, I apologize.
Okay, well, that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Alyssa.
I just think that by what the superintendent said about the, something's gonna, because of the compression of our schedule, that's why it takes longer than three meetings, all right, we're gonna do it, because there's a lot of weight that we have to look at and weigh what's being taken, what's being given, so, again, I've, I've said it prior, and I'm gonna say it again, we're not, nobody's blowing you guys off, we all think this is a great idea, it's just the how that is so difficult right now, because...
Right.
Something would have to be taken.
Which is not ideal.
Unless it's, it's, you know, it's an enrichment or something like that after school, but I, I don't want anybody to walk away with the idea that, you know, we don't care, because I know to a person, we do, but it's just, it's just the how.
Okay, well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody else care to address the board at this time? Okay, that brings us to our board member commentary. Mr. Mullins absent this evening.
I was gonna say, his father was here, his mother was here, his sister was here, but he's not.
I'm guessing he's playing sports somewhere, it's all your fault, Mr. Flanagan. Okay, Mr. Latham, go.
Uh, congratulations to all the winter sports teams, thank their parents, thank their coaches, thank the janitorial staff that stays here late and all that. Guys, keep coming to meetings, this is something, this is what you're supposed to do in a small community like this. We have an open board seat, hint, hint.
Petitions are due April 15, 17, something like that, but we have an open board seat, it'd be a shame to appoint somebody.
She asked the petitions, if you were gonna ask, that's what the question was.
And I do have one for somebody else.
And that's how I got guilt-tripped onto the board 12 years ago. Paulette in the hallway of the elementary school, you know, it would be a shame if we had to appoint someone.
All out of the Creens, Christmas party.
Do you want me to really tell everybody how it happened, Mr. Latham? No, go, Dr. Crane.
That's all I have.
Dr. Crane, Vice President Crane, if you'd like.
Well, speaking of board members, you know, Mrs. Fouchet relocated and is no longer on the board, but I don't know if she's gonna be at future meetings, but, you know, certainly her, she's spent a lot of time volunteering to serve and make this a better place, and that's very noble, um, she still is volunteering her time, you know, with robotics, which is wonderful, I think that's where she might be tonight, and I also wanna mention, one of the reasons that Southhold is such a special place, you know, her father, who's, you know, Mr., I guess it's Bill, William Borges, and he was on the board as well.
Me, Bob Borges.
And so I think it's just wonderful that she followed in her father's footstep, served on the board, uh, she was a wonderful board member, good vice president, I'm taking her spot, and I just wanted to make that comment, that's, that's all.
Thank you. Mr. Tobin?
Just wanna echo Mr. Latham's congrats to the winter sports awards recipients, wish the spring sports the best of luck in their competition, and, uh, that's it.
Thank you. Yes, like they said, please keep coming, that's how things happen, and, um, at least reminded us of the shared decision-making team, and, and how, that's how I remember things kinda happening, they don't happen overnight, unfortunately, from things that, that I remember, either we added or we removed, it does take time, 'cause it's not five or six people that are involved in the results of the decision that's made, it's actually hundreds, so, and it's not always just a budgetary issue, but the budgetary part of it is super important, because when Dr. Morrow says, if the budget fails, it's painful, I lived through painful here in Southhold School when we didn't have a budget, and we never want that, and since there's a tax cap imposed, we are under restrictions that weren't around 10 years ago, and it's a big concern, our community has always, always supported us, um, Dr. Crane continues to mention that, and I'll mention, because Mrs. Fouchet and I sat there for years and did surveys, as people came to vote on the budget day, and you'd be amazed, and I was amazed and somewhat disgusted by the lack of parents that come out and vote for the school budget, our community comes out and votes for our school budget, you guys all know, a lot of our community's made up of senior citizens, and that tells me and us that they're passing our budgets for us. So we do have to walk that fine line between the ability of the taxpayers to afford their taxes, and providing a quality education for our students. I think we provide the best quality of education for our students from K through 12th grade, and I think, we often say this time of the year, when so much happens in March, the kids are at robotics this week, they were here, they're there, they go everywhere, and we're a small public school district that provide clubs and extracurriculars and athletics, like, I don't think you're gonna find another district our size. Our enrollment, we told you the numbers a few months ago, how much it's decreased in just the last four or five years, that's a hard nut, that's a real hard nut, to sustain all of the programs that we have here at Southhold, and we have not cut a program. We've moved some, we've changed some, because the interest levels change, but we're really proud of not cutting, keeping our programs intact to provide for our students and our community. When we have the plays that the kids put on and concerts, community members come, it's not just parents and grandparents, we see a lot of community members, so, I'd ask you sometimes to remember the big picture too, not just the focus of whether it's elementary or middle school or high school, we're a K through 12 district on one campus, so sometimes